Good evening, and I'd call this meeting to order. Today is Monday, October 5th, 2015. Meeting for the per-- uh, we're here for the meeting, uh, regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. It's, uh, 7:39. Uh, I would ask that you all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Spencer, could you call the roll?
Deuter.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Kowalski.
Here.
Dorrit.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist. Absent. Wagner.
Here.
Hollenar.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Uh, thirteen present, one absent, we have a quorum. On to, uh, Agenda Item 3, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody who has any written communication they wish to submit to the council at this time? If so, please raise your hand, any written communication. Okay. Anyone else? Sir, if you could approach, uh, and, uh, hand whatever written communication you... Okay. Um, any written communication that anyone wishes to submit? Seeing them, we'll go on to Agenda Item 4, Public Forum. This is an opportunity, uh, this is the portion of our meeting where there's an opportunity for anyone in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you, uh, keep your comments to three minutes, out of respect for other people that may want to speak this evening, and out of respect for the work that we are here to get done this evening. When you are called, we ask that you go over to the microphone over here, and announce your name, address is optional, and, uh, and then continue on with your comments. If you go over three comments, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. At this time, Clerk Spencer, is there anybody who has signed up for Public Forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several, and I'll start with William Kling, 175 South Kennelworth.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, Attorney Strino. Uh, good evening, my name is William Kling. My wife and I live at 175 South Kennelworth Avenue. I have lived in Elmhurst for close to 25 years. I've been an active and engaged resident throughout that time. Professionally, I'm a professor of policy at University of Illinois-Chicago, and I've also provided legal representation to public sector entities, including municipalities, for almost 30 years. I'm here tonight to strongly urge you to reconsider passage of the revised sign ordinance. Instead, the ordinance should be referred back to the Development Planning and Zoning Committee for further deliberation. In the alternative, the ordinance should be amended to reflect the language from the original recommendation, which accurately reflects the feeling of residents negatively impacted by allowing electronic signs in residential neighborhoods. Make no mistake, Mayor, those of us who live in residential locations impacted by the ordinance do not want these signs. There has been a repeated effort to cast this as an issue equally divided. That's just wrong. We live here. We pay taxes. Many voices heard in favor of the signage do not live in our town, do not pay taxes in our town, and will not be personally impacted by these signs. We will be, and we stand firm in our resolve to fight against electronic signs in residential neighborhood. As an attorney and policy expert, I am very concerned, Mayor, about the process that brought many of us out tonight to voice our strong objection to this particular issue. The procedural chicanery that led to the consideration of the sign ordinance tonight is inappropriate and unconscionable. I have seen this type of behavior many times in other communities. I never expected to see it here. As a matter of good public policy, while there may have been some deliberation on the impact of these electronic signs in residential neighborhoods so far, we have yet to see any expert reports on how electronic signs will impact our residential neighborhoods. We all can be better informed as to the impact of these signs, and the impact on the public's health and safety, aesthetics, property values, and other implications. To act hastily tonight is unnecessary and against good public policy. What's the hurry? Why rush? Instead, as a community, we can work together to have a full, fair, honest, and complete conversation about this very important issue to us. To me, it seems clear that more proof is necessary to demonstrate any public good for this decision. So please, I implore you, the ordinance should be referred back to the Development Planning and Zoning Committee for further deliberation. In the alternative, the ordinance should be amended to reflect the language from the original recommendation, which accurately reflects the will of residents impacted by these signs. Thank you for your consideration.
Rebecca Lipton, 218 Cuyuga. Okay. Craig Nelson, 190 East St. Charles.
Abby, can you repeat? I just want to make sure, repeat it again, so we don't miss it.
Rebecca Lipton, 218.
Last call?
Cuyuga.
Well, she'll have an opportunity at the end if she, if she comes back.
Craig Nelson, 190 East St. Charles.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and all, the debate over allowing electronic message boards into residentially zoned areas has been going on since at least 2012. Prior to the debate being started, mistakes were made in the interpretation of the zoning code regarding electronic changing signs without ever being corrected. These mistakes were made by city staff, commission members, committee members, and the council. This fact was affirmed by the city's own legal council when they sought a legal opinion, and it was rendered that the city had not been following their own ordinance. Rather than attempt to find a way to correct the mistakes and apologize to the citizens for failing to uphold the ordinances at that time, city staff set about to create a new set of rules which would somehow absolve them of the previous mistakes made, somehow to get them back to where they thought they were, which was candidly some type of arbitrary approval process for allowing electronic changing signs depending on how much resistance they might meet from the neighbors. In the process of attempting to rewrite the ordinance, staff arbitrarily pulled in a new set of rules from Elmhurst's latest long-term comprehensive plan. To my knowledge, the comprehensive plan is a guide, not a legally binding document. It was not a legal document for which all planning decisions must be based, nor has it ever been incorporated as part of the zoning code or municipal ordinances. The rules that the staff is attempting to put into the zoning ordinance, and by the way, only with respect to residentially zoned areas, is to label a couple of roads as "minor arterials." The assertion by staff is that the inclusion of the phrase "minor arterial" somehow overrides all other aspects of the zoning condition in residentially zoned areas is bizarre to me. All of this debate has resulted in a conflict that in truth is a virtual gerrymandering of two specific sites in our town. It is by almost any measure a true attempt at spot zoning for a couple of signs. These two sites are the Lutheran Redeemer Church on St. Charles Road and the First Baptist Church on the corner of St. Charles and York Street. One side is attempting to spot zone these two sites into being allowed to have electronic message centers; the other side, for which I am advocating, is telling you to keep them out. St. Charles York Road and York Street are heavier traffic sites than others; this is true. It is my belief that they're also one of the reasons that Elmhurst is a place that folks aspire to move to. Coming off the Eisenhower through a brief transitional area gives one a sense of transition, a sense that you are coming into a community. Similarly, coming in through the east, past the high school corridor, past Spring Road and Hagens, gives you the same sense, as does traversing York Street north from Valette where heading south from church. It's the very tenderloin of Elmhurst's largest R1-zoned area. The notion that a few more electronic signs won't alter this character is false. I candidly ask you, do any of you up on the dais who is voting live in a residentially zoned area and in direct line of sight of one of these signs? If nothing else, I would urge you to amend back to the original, uh, the original statement as proposed by DPZ, or remand this back to committee for further consideration. You need to get this right, not create policy based on some false sense of urgency. You need to create good public policy. Thank you.
Kevin Van Solcom, 3...
Van Solcom.
Oh, okay. 311 South Kennelworth. Sorry for mispronouncing your name.
Good evening, Kevin Van Solcom, 311 South Kennelworth. I live about six houses to the north on the east side of Kennelworth from St. Charles.
Can you raise the mic? Yeah, can you, can you tilt the mic up toward you? There you go. Thank you.
Should I start over?
Yes, please, start over.
So, Kevin Van Solcom, 311 South Kennelworth. Live about six or seven houses north of St. Charles on the east side. I'm really here to challenge the process that this amendment has followed. Quite candidly, it feels like, you know, it's followed the proverbial fast one to your decision tonight. Uh, I think a lot of us know all of the debate, the merits and, uh, dismerits of having electronic signs. We've debated it that extensively, and it just feels like this one's really come up quickly, and so I'm asking for your consideration to defer action on this, to remand it back to the zoning commission, uh, so that the effective dialogue of this can continue. We've spent a lot of time talking about it, and it doesn't really seem that, uh, the issue has received its fair hearing the way it's being presented now, and that, that bothers me from a fairness standpoint. And so I'm not here to argue the technical merits of electronic signs or not. I don't, I don't like them for my own reasons, but I would just ask that you consider the sense of fairness and remand it back to the zoning and planning commission. Thanks.
Doug Manning, 320 South Kennelworth.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Uh, my wife and I live at 320 South Kennelworth, uh, and I really just wanted to make two points. I won't reiterate some of the points that others have made here. The first concern is that, and I haven't seen anything that has come out in any of the proposed ordinances, that there are 13 potential sites that are on minor arterial streets that an electronic sign could be erected on as long as they met the conditional use, uh, under this ordinance. That's a lot of signs. Um, and as we know, uh, even though there is a conditional use process, that is not one that is often rejected. In fact, if you look at the history of conditional uses, um, the only one that I can think of is one where the, uh, the city attorney, uh, came out with a ruling that the, uh, the zoning ordinance was being misinterpreted. Um, that's the only one, to my knowledge, that has been rejected in terms of signage in residential areas. And the second point, which is one that I think has been overlooked a little bit, is, is the degree of brightness that this ordinance would allow. So this ordinance is allowing a light, a brightness of 50 lumens, uh, which is a scientific measure of how bright a sign is. By comparison, um, our neighbors to the west, Naperville, allow 30 lumens, so almost half of what the brightness level that Elmhurst would allow. So I think at the very least, that that's something that's a serious concern, of how bright would these signs be, not only in residential districts but elsewhere in Elmhurst, as we're evaluating electronic signs and the potential pollution that they bring, um, with messages to us. So should it be at 50 lumens? Is there a reason that they need to be that bright? Or should we get this right, send this back to the DPZ committee, evaluate what is the proper light level that these signs should be? We have one chance to get this right, let's do that, and, and have an honest debate about this. Thank you.
David Navatney, 387 East Church Street.
Mayor Morley, excuse me, members of the city council. Uh, my name is David Navatney, 397 East Church Street, and, uh, my wife and I have lived in Elmhurst since 1982, and for the past few months, I've had the privilege of serving as president of the Board of Directors of the Elmhurst Symphony Association. And with me today is Cynthia Krantz, who has been working with the symphony for 20 years and has been our executive director, uh, for 10 years. Uh, on behalf of the board, and on behalf of the musicians of the Elmhurst Symphony, and most importantly, uh, on behalf of the members of our audience, uh, we wanted to take a moment this evening to express our sincere thanks and appreciation to the city council for the support that you have provided to the symphony, uh, not only for the current year but in years past. Uh, without your support, the Elmhurst Symphony would not be the symphony that it is today. Uh, the Elmhurst Symphony was formed 53 years ago, and, uh, as our website states, we believe it is truly a cultural gem of the western suburbs. Uh, we attract audience members not only from Elmhurst but from Oak Brook, Hinsdale, Lombard, Villa Park, uh, even into Chicago. For the last 20 years, the symphony has, uh, been under the baton of Dr. Stephen Altop, who is, uh, enjoys a national, international reputation as a performer, uh, and as a conductor. He also holds a teaching post at Northwestern University, and, uh, we're very privileged that he has been with us for the last 20 years. Our 2015-2016 season opens with our first concert on October 17th at 7 o'clock PM at the Elmhurst Christian Reform Church, and the program is entitled "Copland's Music of the Heartland," and it will include two pieces that will be narrated live and in person by Brian Dennehy, uh, the well-known actor of stage, screen, and television. Uh, in keeping with the Heartland theme, we'll be having a barbecue dinner before the concert. Uh, the details are on our website. Uh, so we invite everyone in this great city and our neighbors in the surrounding towns to take a few hours on October 17th and smell the roses and enjoy an outstanding performance by the Elmhurst Symphony Orchestra, a performance that would not be possible without the support of the city council. Again, thank you, and we look forward to seeing you on October 17th.
Thank you.
Keith Rofrano, 295 South Kenmore.
Okay.
Next, we have Robert Hendrick. Hedrick, Hedrick.
Yes, no, and, thank you. Um, I'm Bob Hedrick, I live at 200 East St. Charles. Although I'm not in favor of additional cluttering of Elmhurst with electronically changing, changing signs in Elmhurst residents, that's not why I'm standing to speak to you tonight. The reason I'm standing to speak to you tonight is I like to advocate for due process. I realize that as dead-set against the new signs, as we are, there's another set of people, and I won't gauge the numbers, that are equally, uh, determined to get the signs. So the question becomes just exactly, how do you resolve a question that is, appears to be completely antagonistically arranged? In other words, you got people for, people against, and not too many people in the middle. And I'll bet you know the answer already, the answer is due process. Now, what do I mean by due process? I mean a fair, full hearing or series of hearings that are required so that both sides feel heard, their points of view understood, and that they realize that their point of view has been considered. Okay? Uh, and I wish, I wish I could use the example, uh, the process so far of deliberating on the sign issue as an example of due process, but I can't, because we've yet to achieve, I think, a fair hearing, let alone due process. So what, and I'll give you some examples of what I do not think is a full observation of due process. First, remove, interrupting the committee process that was going through the consideration of this and bringing it to a full vote of the council tonight or in the, any timeframe that doesn't allow for the full process of due process to unfold. Uh, I, I can't, I don't have the words to stress enough how much I feel that's a mistake. I think another example of failure to achieve due process is to take these signs up one at a time, or a couple at a time, or a few at a time. What we really need is a framework that's adopted against which these requests can be, uh, considered in, in large, en masse, not just one at a time. And then, uh, my last example, and I could go on, but I won't, for, um, the, uh, the failure to observe due process would be to leap to the position where the people in power thought the ordinance was. In other words, put in place how we were operating before, before we managed to align the, the ordinance with practice. And I'm not sure I was as clear as I could be on that, but, uh, what I'm saying is, I don't think it's fair either, to either side, to just leap to a new ordinance that resembles what we thought, or what some people thought the old ordinance looked like, just because that's the way it was. Um, and then, lastly, I'd like to make a comment about religious discrimination. I've heard claims that we are practicing religious discrimination because the early churches that came to get a sign, got a sign, and if you weren't early in line, you came later, you're not getting a sign. That is not religious discrimination. That's an example of a government discovering a mistake and self-correcting those mistakes. If, if anyone wants to know what a religious, uh, discrimination is, you can ask, uh, a Jewish member of the community, especially about the past, or you can ask a Muslim member of the community about today. Thank you.
Okay. Marilyn Novak, or Noak, something like that. Sorry, I can't read your writing. 170 East St. Charles.
I'm Marilyn Novak, N-O-V-A-K, and, uh, 170 East St. Charles, and, uh, I'm in one of the homes that will probably be affected by any potential new sign on, along St. Charles there. So I strongly urge you to follow the process, follow the process. Send it back to the, uh, Development's, um, Planning and Zoning Committee, and go through the process that others talked about. I echo their sentiments exactly. I think we want to maintain the residential character of Elmhurst, and this is one way that we can do it. I think, uh, careful consideration is needed here. Thank you.
Kathleen Sullivan, um, tonight you have on your agenda to vote on engineering for a Madison school. I certainly hope you do do that. That's, um, going on five years that we've been working on this project of flooding, um, longer than we've been working on the sign issue, and I just look forward to having shovels in the ground soon. Thanks.
That's all who signed in tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's it for, uh, everyone, that's it for Public Forum, for everyone who has signed in this evening. Is there anyone in the audience who do not have an opportunity to sign in on our sign-in sheet but still wishes to address the council? If so, please raise your hand, so I can get a count. I see three folks. Okay, we'll go left to right, my left to right. Ms. Wolf, we'll start with you.
Paula Wolf, 444 North Larch. You know, it's nice to see extra people in the crowd tonight. Obviously, signage is a big issue, and, uh, I can agree with them, and, uh, you should know where your church is, you shouldn't need a big sign for it, and, uh, that should not lead to other signs going up indiscriminately. Um, I wish we had as many people speaking out against, uh, Thornton's gas station. For us on the north side, it's an issue, and I don't think anybody's really listening to it. It's a dollars and cents thing, and we could certainly use something a little bit nicer and upscale than a gas station 24/7. And also, I, I wish more people would come out about my favorite subject, flooding, and, um, ask, demand, whatever, plead for changes. We're getting a little farther along with the school district, we're not doing too well with the parks, and I think they're right. It doesn't all have to fall on them, and if everything does move forward and things seem to be going better for us, I hope that doesn't tell the council or Public Works that they don't have to continue to solve this issue, so that 10 years down the line, we're right back in the same place. It's a citywide problem, even if your house doesn't take water, you might not be able to get down the streets that you want to traverse. It's, it's something that has been ignored for years, and, uh, I've said it before, we don't have to worry about how many years we're going to flood, it's how many floods are we going to have over those years. And we all want to be able to use our homes. Um, the values seem to be going down. I spoke with somebody last week who had met with, um, multiple realtors, I believe, and the realtors are not real happy either. It's not an easy city to sell a house in. People know our reputation. There was something on the Facebook flooding page today. That was the issue in their comment. The other thing I would like to ask for again, for some consideration, um, we need to know what the priorities are of this council, of this city, and, in my mind, of course, flooding is the issue. But what, can you set forth your 1, 2, 3, 4th priorities so that we know where flooding is? If my roof leaks, but I want to go on vacation, what, what am I going to do? The priorities, I got to fix my roof, and I think that's the way this council needs to work. People are being hurt by water, in their streets, in their homes, and I would love to get a sheet in with my water bill that asks me, or tells me, exactly what the priorities are, and what I would rate them, how high would I rate them. I don't think the parking garage was very high on my list, I don't know about other people. But we need to know what's going on, other than coming here and hearing it from others. We need to know from the city, and the printed word is really important, and it can be taken to heart. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pagach, I believe you had your hand up.
Claude Pagach, 566 West Gladys. I didn't sign up tonight for one reason. I wanted to hear what these gentlemen had to say. Small signs going to show up in their neighborhood by the crowd. Thornton Garage is going to have signs that's going to light up the whole neighborhood. Council doesn't listen to them, do they? Allamond said at the meeting for this Thornton Ga-- uh, gas station, the residents were there, pleaded their case. Signs broke every ordinance that we have, and then we hear from the committee, "Well, we really didn't bring that subject up." What do they figure they're going to have, some guy up on Eisenhower with a A-frame sign on his chest? It's amazing the tenacity of this, this council at this moment when those gentlemen were There was, not too long ago, about six years ago, about 800 or 900 people came to this council, filled this building, filled the outside of it, and asked the council to work on flooding. Six years later, almost, we're still debating flooding. But I got two garages. I got Han, it eats up money like crazy, and we're still discussing flooding. I asked this council why that group of gentlemen get to your utmost attention, and 800 or 900 people have no effect on you at all. Woman's still pleading her case. And Thornton, we got another business here, want some money. Thornton's going to be coming along. The question was, why did people buy houses next to a gas station? It's not the question. The question is why the building department of Elmhurst allowed a gas station being next, built next to residential, but they did it on West also. Is there a report from the fire marshal, how he feels about a gas station being on top of a residential area? Or is that just document was another one that was overlooked? Now, I'm assured with Now, I'm assured what's going to happen tonight, that ordinance might have been passed, but every alderman here is going to take it back because those gentlemen showed up.
Mr. Pagash, I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay. But just remember one thing. There's 15,000 households in here, and they're not all built around St. Charles and York.
Okay, the gentleman in the blue and white shirt. Yes, you.
Evening, Mr. Mayors and council members. My name is Jim Hauser. I live at 140 East St. Charles Road. That's the home that's directly across the street from the property in question with the signage. As such, my property is probably the single most affected by that sign, and I'll just make three brief points. Number one, I've lived there for 19 years now. It's a fairly bucolic view across the street to a nice grassy church lawn, and there's a couple of beautiful churches down the street, beautiful homes around. Can't imagine what it's going to be like to open my front door and look out and see a sign. It's going to be like living across the street from a Dairy Queen. I mean, it's just not in character for the neighborhood. It's inappropriate. Number two, I've not, to my knowledge, there have been no real safety studies done in the time that I've lived there. There have been a lot of accidents on that corner just because of traffic backing up New York. I've seen a lot of cases where, and there are a lot of bikers, a lot of runners, people walking dogs, kids playing in that area. I've seen a lot of close calls where pedestrians are almost hit because drivers aren't paying attention. Introducing a sign with motion and lights and all that, I mean, common sense tells you it's going to even further distract drivers. Are we really willing to put pedestrians' lives at risk for the chance to have another sign in an area where it doesn't belong? And the third thing I would suggest is, you know, I understand there are procedural issues. I understand signs have been granted in the past under circumstances that are now being looked at differently. Maybe we not, we need to look at this with a little more common sense approach, not have a cookie cutter approach to it, but look at each situation individually. You know, you've got, Visitation has a sign. Well, yes, it does. It's a long stretch of property owned by them. It's a four-lane road there. Maybe a little bit more suitable for something like that. St. Charles Road, it's a two-lane road. Commercial traffic is not permitted down there. It's clearly a residential neighborhood. It doesn't belong. Timothy Christian, I don't know. That's kind of a mixed bag. Maybe that one should not have been granted. So just because maybe inappropriate permissions may have been given in the past, there's no reason to continue that in the future, I think we need to look at each situation on a very individual basis and move from there. I mean, trying to solve this by saying any location, I mean, some of the gentlemen over here mentioned potential other sites that could get signs, I'm sure some of those are probably not suitable. So solving this with a blanket approach is not the right answer, in my opinion. Thank you for your attention.
Okay. I believe that's it for public forum. Is there anyone else who did not have an opportunity that wishes to raise their hand?
Michael Mizinga, 340 South Kenilworth, Elmhurst, Illinois. I would echo a lot of the words that were brought forth. Just to give a Realtor's perspective, signs in the area we're talking about would be very inappropriate. I think the items should refer back to the zoning and planning. I think they had that exclusionary area very well done, and I would recommend that that be put back in their hands and regrouped for the whole council. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else at this time? Seeing none, that closes our public forum, and I'll go on to Agenda Item 5. Any announcements from the dais? Alderman Sabatino.
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Dwyter and I will be hosting a First Ward Town Hall meeting on Thursday, November 5th, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Elmer's College in Circle Hall, Garden Level. It's located on the southwest corner of Alexander and Prospect. There's ample parking directly across the street from Alexander, around Alexander, rather. And all residents are welcome and encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Great. Any other announcements from the dais? Alderman Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Next Monday is a public holiday, but we, as the Public Works and Building Committee, are going to plan to meet next Monday so we can avoid an issue where we can't meet due to a quorum. So we are going to start at 6:30 with a previously planned executive session, and then around 7:15, we'll start the normal Public Works and Buildings Committee meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Any other announcements? Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. ECAF Oktoberfest is this Thursday from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. at Wilder Mansion. It's a beer tasting in German tradition with food and live entertainment. Tickets are $30 per person and are available online at ECAF, the number four kids. That's ECAF, the number four kids dot org, or at the door. Proceeds, as always, will go to assist Elmhurst families in need of assistance with medical or other care-based expenses.
Okay, great. Any other announcements? Seeing none, we'll go on to Agenda Item 6, Consent Agenda. At this time, is there any item on a consent agenda that any alderman wishes to have removed to vote no or provide additional comment? Alderman Bram?
Six, excuse me, 6.10.
Alderman Levin?
614.
Pardon me?
6.14.
614. Any others? Okay. We have two items pulled. Seeing that, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Items 6.10 and Item 6.14. Motion to approve consent agenda minus these two items. Motion by Alderman Healy, second by Alderman Bram. Clerk Spencer.
Healy.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Heinquist absent.
Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Dwyter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion passes. Consent agenda, consent agenda is approved minus Items 6.10 and Item 6.14. On to first item pulled, Agenda Item 6.10. This is a report out of DP and Z. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Development Planning and Zoning Committee that the City Council direct the city attorney to prepare a consultant agreement with Vance Like Enterprises, Inc., and Ken Bartels for real estate consultant services as described above, signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman; Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chairman; Michael Heinquist.
I will, to put this before the council, ask for a motion to approve. The report and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin, this is out of your committee.
Thank you. This is, these are requests by Gerber to move their national headquarters to Elmhurst.
Nope. 6.10.
Sorry. This is the reports. Another interesting topic. This is the report to review two consulting contracts that, as you see, have been in existence for some time. There have not been increases in either of those in many years, and so there is a $10 an hour increase in those. That's basically it, and we'll respond to any questions.
Alderman Bram, you pulled this.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As Alderman Levin has just stated, these are contracting service, and these individuals have filled these roles for many years here in the city of Elmhurst. I guess the first couple of questions would be, how did we come, or how did the committee come to a conclusion of an increase in $10 an hour for both of these consultants? I know we have done previously a three-year contract with them, and the proposal is the same for this upcoming year with a $10 per hour increase. So first question is, how come a 10% or $10 an hour increase? And then second question would be, are these two roles, I guess I'll say, these two roles still necessary to the capacity they are today and how we have utilized them in the past?
Alderman Levin, can you expound on the increase and the committee's thought on the increase, and then the necessity for both consultants?
First of all, in terms of the amount of the increase, it was staff recommendation. The committee concurd that based on the number of years that have passed, you know, seven, eight years since there's been a raise. So if you say 10%, it sounds like it's gone up from year one to year two at 10%. But if you take that over eight years, it's a much smaller increase. Second, in terms of the number of, well, I guess in terms of the contract themselves, you'll recall back in 2009, we had, in particular with respect to one contract, Mr. Bartels, we had three full-time staff in our zoning and planning department. Two full-time positions were eliminated. Mr. Bartels has helped out that department in a number of other functions. The committee felt it's cost-effective to use someone who we don't have to pay benefits to, who has great familiarity with the city, and by all the people in the committee's opinion, has done a very good job for the city. Mr. Vance Like provides real estate services, and because of the amount of development that's been going on in the city, his services have been needed. That includes developments such as whether it's Han Street or the new, the old hospital site, and it's an expertise that we would like to retain.
Any other comments? Alderman Bram?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we first discussed this, and Alderman Levin is correct, back in 2009, we did have additional staff in development planning and zoning, but we also didn't have a communications coordinator like we do today. And we continue to say, I believe, the city manager may have said in the past, that we are going to reduce this role due to the fact that we are moving forward with, and have moved forward with, a communications coordinator position, which is a salaried position, which is adding benefits to the bottom line for the city of Elmhurst residents. I have great concern that we haven't, and I know per policy or that we don't need to seek out other professional services to do a comparison, but overall, these years, we have not done so. And that is a concern for me. When it comes down to 10% or $10 an hour, their past contract or this contract, to me, what it comes down to is they are a consultant or a contractor. It is not like talking in terminology of current staff or full-time employee that are getting benefits. Yes, they accepted the contract, both these roles accepted the contract as is for three years at that going rate three years ago, which was, at that time, for one of the roles $100 per hour, and the other role, I believe it was $90 per hour. So you can't look at it in the same light that it's a full-time employee versus a contractor. They are what they are for the reasons of being paid benefits, not being paid benefits, having the luxury of having potentially yearly increases and not. That's what a contractor role is. That's what they signed up for, and I believe these two roles understood that when they signed the bottom line of the contract three years ago. I think $10 an hour for both of these is a significant increase, especially since we have no comparison, no bullet points to compare to, or no baseline to compare it to, if this is what other municipalities pay for these roles, and if Elmhurst needs these roles. The past budget cycle, I made mention of this, that we should review this closely and see if we can either greatly reduce or maybe possibly eliminate one or both of these positions. I don't know if there's been a performance review in these past three years, and that's what merits the staff recommendation. But if we look in the past three years, the maximum cap is getting closer and closer for both of these positions or both of these roles, one of which last year was paid $44,055, and that was close to the cap of $45,000. That was in the agreement. The other one, not so close, being 81 and change, which the cap was $90,000. It seems to me we're increasing to increase the number of hours to make sure that we continue these roles compared to scrutinizing these roles, especially the standpoint when we have a communication coordinator onboard today. I can't support this recommendation. I think that we need to closely scrutinize this and look if we could have some of these rolled, either rolled into the current staff that we have on, or reduce the number of hours that we're paying, as well as the rate that we're paying both.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to please call the roll.
Levin.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Dwyter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Heinquist absent.
Wagner.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6.10 is approved. On to Agenda Item 6.14. This is an ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving a text amendment to the city of Elmhurst zoning ordinance for the purpose of allowing institutional message board signs, manual and institutional message board signs, electronic as conditional uses in the C/R, the RE, the R1, R2, R3, R4, and the O/IC zoning districts.
Okay. This is an ordinance. Put this before the council, I'll ask for a motion to approve as read. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Healy. Okay. Zone ordinance is before us. Alderman Mulliner, you made the motion to put this before us.
This is a series of text amendments, which we discussed at length at the last meeting. What I want to do is just take 30 seconds to just clarify a few statements to make sure everybody is understanding what has occurred with this. This is an issue that has been being discussed for a number of years, probably back since about 2012, maybe 13, ballpark idea of the time. At that time, it was identified that there were some errors in the ordinance, and there needed to be some corrections made. A recommendation to the zoning commission was made. The zoning commission had a series of hearings over a period of time to discuss these changes. These changes then came forward to the zoning committee of the city council. The zoning committee made a recommendation. As I mentioned at the last meeting, I had an oversight as far as I was concerned, because I don't believe that we should put an exception for one small area into a zoning ordinance. And I made a recommendation at the last meeting to remove Bullet Point 3. The ordinance is written minus Bullet Point 3, and I believe that we should move this ordinance forward, done appropriately, as we've done in the past, going through all of the processes that are approved by the city council.
Okay. Additional comments? Alderman Levin?
Thank you. I will not go into as much length as I did last time because I know you were all here and heard what I had to say. I do want to emphasize that the points that were raised in terms of excluding certain portions of St. Charles and York Street were solely based on good policy. And if you heard a lot of people speak tonight, it's a policy that maintains the neighborhood character on those streets. I've gone back and reviewed the entire file to look at all the comments that were made, and as I mentioned before, I think there's, there is, there's a couple of things that, I'll tie into what Alderman Mulliner said. There were no errors in the ordinance. The ordinance said what it said. There was an error in the application of the ordinance. And that error in application led staff to propose its solution to the commission, which essentially, I feel, merely followed staff's recommendation of how to get back to where we thought we were. As I also mentioned, to characterize this, as one of the speakers did, that there are two sides to it. There's always two sides. You'll always find someone who's going to speak against it. But I personally pulled, well, I guess for those who were at the meetings, it wasn't even close, as I say. If you exclude the members of the particular institution who spoke, I have had one resident in all that time tell me they thought it would be okay. There have been several dozen who spoke to me vehemently opposed to it, that have attended a lot of the meetings. I personally, when it was reported to the commission that it was evenly split... I personally, when it was reported to the commission that it was evenly split, I personally pulled the written comments and determined that if you exclude multiple submissions and people who didn't live in town but were affiliated with the institutions, it was hardly split. It was very much weighted against having these signs in these neighborhoods. So the, there has, there have, there has been a hearing. The commission had a hearing. And when it comes to committee, most times I look at something and say, it's had a good hearing. In this case, it didn't, because the process has been flawed all along. So in this case, whatever happened last time, last meeting to me is unfortunate. I don't think a good policy discussion was had. I heard questions by Aldermen, which suggest to me, they didn't even understand what the ordinance was all about. And I've had some calls since then to talk to people and explain why this was changed. And I don't know how anyone can say that, and I've driven these streets many times, we've had a lot of time over the last three years to look at how this should be, and as you drive the streets, it's a policy-based decision on the character of the neighborhood. And as one of the speakers said, four lanes, bright lights, overhead lighting versus two lanes, single pole light, surrounded completely by homes on both sides. You have to listen to the people who live in the neighborhoods. You can't just listen to what one or two institutions want. You know, when it was characterized as we're excluding two, no, actually, by taking these words out, there are many institutions that are excluded. By taking these words out, there was a prejudice in favor of these two institutions to have signs that others throughout the town cannot have. There are many institutions that won't qualify, because they're not on minor arterial streets. So the fact is that the best policy is to leave it as it was and exclude those portions of St. Charles and York that are highly residential. It doesn't matter what you call the street, it matters what the neighborhood looks like. People live in neighborhoods, not just on streets. And at this time, although as much as I'd like to send it back to committee, the gymnastics to do a motion to reconsider, and to then vote on the issue, to have it turned over, I don't think we'll make it through that. I am going to make a motion, and for those of you who have board docs handily, as it was posted on board docs on the bottom of page six, it has the word stricken. I'm going to ask that they be unstricken, and if that's confusing for you, then I'm passing around the words added back in. And I hope that you'll listen to the people you heard from tonight and think about it in terms of policy, not in terms of one or two institutions.
So Alderman Levin, it's a motion to amend the, amend the ordinance. I'm looking at page six. The first word that has been struck, I hope I'm using my tense properly, is provided. And you wish that, the motion is to put back the wording that has been struck, starting with provided, and finishing with streets, as is indicated with what you've provided in writing.
That's correct.
Okay. We have a motion to amend. Do I have a second for that motion to amend?
Point of order. Is this allowed on ordinance?
Yes, it is. It didn't used to be. It did not, we did not use to allow amendments to ordinances without an automatic, I think, sendback for two weeks. Code was rewritten about two years ago. So I double-checked and asked the city attorney.
Okay.
So a motion to amend an ordinance is in order, and I have a motion. Do I have a second? Alderman Bram, do you have a point of order or a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. We have a motion to amend the ordinance that is before us. It's on page six of the entire ordinance, and Alderman Levin has provided a short paragraph that shows what his motion entails. Everything that's underlined is his, is the motion to put back in. Continued discussion. Alderman York.
Thank you, your honor. Well, I guess the most troubling part about this for me is the fact that, at the end of the day, what we seem to be pointing everything towards is an application that was never rejected, it got removed by the petitioner, that we're, we're talking about that, all the details and the stuff around an actual conditional use request. And as I noted last week, I think what, obviously what we're doing here tonight is addressing an ordinance and changing an ordinance. And so I'm going to still stand on the point that the fairest thing to do is to adopt an ordinance that doesn't arbitrarily exclude anyone from bringing forth a petition for a conditional use, or a conditional use request. And I think a lot of the points that were made are valid points, but I think they need to be heard in context of an application and not the exclusion by an ordinance. So those are the points that I'm going to, that I stood on, and I'm going to continue to stand on. You know, I believe that the discussion has been going on for quite a while, as Alderman Levin himself noted. We have been talking about this for a long time, and there's been a process, and there will be a very legitimate process going forward with whatever way this thing happens to fall, whether the exclusion is in there or the exclusion isn't, it's still, at the end of the day, a conditional use. So I think that, in this particular case, that a conditional use is the best way to handle this type of situation. It doesn't, in my opinion, arbitrarily rule anybody out of being able to ask. I think there's times when it's great to say no, and had that one made it through to the end, as I explained to people who called me, I couldn't, I couldn't rule on that one, because I had a conflict of interest. But with regarding the ordinance, I don't. I think we need to do the best job that we can to pass ordinances. There certainly was plenty of time for discussion in the committee. It was there often. And I think that we need to, we need to keep that in the back of our minds. And with that, I would like to ask the mayor, if I may, just ask one question of the city attorney.
Well, do you want to call a point of order? Or do you have a question? You can ask me, and I'll defer to the attorney if needed.
I guess I would just like to know, is there, do we put ourselves in a perilous position by excluding somebody because, and what was the term you used, Alderman Levin? The feel of the neighborhood? Or, I don't want to get it wrong, so I'm asking you.
I don't have a particular term. The character of the neighborhood?
The character of the neighborhood, the feel of the neighborhood. Is there a problem, at the end of the day, with, with doing an exclusion based on, on that particular?
Any sort of discrimination or something of that nature? Or just the term? Not, I'm not talking about discrimination of an applicant. You're talking about use of the term?
Yes. Is it, is it, is the term have legal standing to exclude?
Character of the neighborhood.
I mean, it's hard, because there are standards in a case called LaSalle versus the county of Cook, where surrounding lane uses are considered in connection with a conditional use application or a rezoning application. This is neither of those. This is a text amendment. So rather than say, you know, where we're at, all I'm really saying is that this is a little bit different, because it is a text amendment. If, if something rose to the level of a conditional use application, I would say that the character around that, depending on what the decision was, would be, would be considered.
And okay to be?
What the surrounding uses would be.
Okay to be considered?
In, in that application process.
Point of order, is what's being asked by Alderman York in regards to the ordinance or an applicant to the ordinance?
I think he's asking, he's asking if the ordinance is amended, is it put us in any legal jeopardy? That's my take.
You're correct.
And I think what you heard is no. Okay? I mean, you know, putting the city attorney on the spot, I think you got a no. We can consider it. Okay. Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, mayor. I had a couple of questions about this, received a few from neighbors, but generally, about what this means, there is a church that's two blocks from me, and I think people were happy to hear that the church in our neighborhood would not be able to apply for an electronic sign. I think that this proposed amendment serves to acknowledge that, even though St. Charles is categorized in a class with Grand Avenue, its character is more like that of West Avenue or Spring Road. And just as institutions in residential areas on Spring or West may not apply for an electronic sign, I think it's fitting that we have the same restrictions on St. Charles, so I would support this motion.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Saludo.
Thank you. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, given that we did not have an extensive debate substantive to the ordinance itself and the report itself last week, unfortunately, or two weeks ago, unfortunately. I did have a question for the committee, as it relates to their discussion on a particular topic, as it relates to the lumens. Is that appropriate to discuss as it relates to this ordinance at this time?
Well, I think we-
It's not about the motion.
Well, no, it's okay. It's, it's still about the ordinance that's in front of us, and I think we addressed the lumens in it, so I'll allow it. It's a discussion about the ordinance, so.
Thank you, mayor.
You can just posture a question.
Yeah, my question is to, I would appreciate background information on what the committee did discuss during the committee process, as it relates to the amount of lumens allowed for these signs.
Okay. Two members of the committee, either one want to opine? Alderman Levin, as it relates to the brightness?
There was, early on, there was discussion about limitations on the illumination that any sign could have, and this would apply not only to residential neighborhoods, but to commercial signs as well. And so we did have a sign expert that came in and talked to us about different ways of measuring it, and there are several different ones. We landed on 50 candle feet. At the last committee meeting we had, before it went to council, we agreed we would pull it back for two reasons, one of which was because I saw that Naperville's ordinance set the illumination level at 30 candle feet. And so I had asked staff if it would investigate and see if perhaps we were missing something, and there was a better number that should have been in our ordinance, and we never got back to that.
Okay. All right. Any other conversation as it relates to this motion?
Yes.
Alderman Levin.
I didn't know if other people wanted to speak, but there are a couple things I want to respond to. You know, the idea that everyone, that we shouldn't exclude what this amendment would do, which would be two institutions, completely ignores the fact that there are a lot of institutions that won't have the right to come in. Many, many that won't have the right to come in and have their case heard. An ordinance means you have to draw a line somewhere, and it has to be based on good policy. And I see really no much more difference between Kennelworth and St. Charles than I do at Spring Road and Valette. But if you look at what staff came up with, with a definition of a minor arterial street, you can completely ignore that. Second, to say that you are protected by the conditional use has two problems. One is, we're setting a standard that determines when you can come in for the conditional use in the first place. And that's, you know, that's the way it is, that's good zoning. And conditional use is not like, well, if you make a really good argument, we might give it to you. Conditional use is, if you meet those conditions, you have a right to have that conditional use issued. And if you're turned down, you can sue based on that, on that fact that you proved it, and the city didn't give it to you. So it's a little stronger position than is being represented. The history is, unfortunately, we walked into this process way after things happened. I wasn't even on the council when I started seeing these signs pop up around town. I thought, gee, I wonder who's on the council? I wonder who's on staff? Because I can't imagine why people would allow these signs in these neighborhoods. So it was an error. They shouldn't have been there. But there's also a reality now that we have to deal with the signs that are there, we can't really go back to ground zero and debate it, but we can control where they're going to pop up from now on. And the amendment, as proposed, really keeps the signs that are there in place, because it makes a good policy point to do that. So I've not heard anything in opposition to this, except for the fact that there's a conditional use possibility, or there should be based on an application to say why it is good policy to have people drive into Elmhurst and arrive at the corner of York and St. Charles, or at the corner of Kennelworth and St. Charles, and have a sign there. And it's not, you know, and I'm sorry that there was some criticism by others who are, don't understand that neighbors come out because that's what's important to them. I don't ever want to discourage people to come out and express their viewpoint. And they're here, and you heard them. These are our residents, they're our voters. There's nothing on the other side, except two institutions. I urge you to adopt the motion.
Okay. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the roll on the motion to reinstate the struck language.
Levin.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
No.
Saludo.
No.
Healy.
No.
Kennedy.
No.
Conquist absent. Wagner.
No.
Mulliner.
No.
Deuter.
Aye.
Zapatino.
No.
Leader.
No.
Dunn.
No.
It looks like three ayes, 10 nays, and one absent.
Three ayes, 10 nays, motion fail. Motion to amend fails. Back to the original motion before us. Approval of the ordinance, agenda item 6.14. Additional comments as it relates to this ordinance? Alderman Palmsky.
Alderman Saludo brought this up. I, I don't, we don't have a lot of substance, other than we were told this was discussed at committee, but is it possible for us to reduce candle feet to, we say it was, it was 30 instead of 50? A question.
Well, sure, it's possible. Same type of motion that Alderman Levin made, but I would ask that you identify it, if you so choose, can you identify it in the, in the ordinance?
I just looked here, I believe it's page 34, but I'd like to know if the committee can comment on that.
I think, no, I think you'd have to make a motion to get this conversation going.
Okay.
You're talking about, I mean, you heard what the committee said, they, before a motion, Alderman Mulliner, you care to talk about?
Yeah, let me, let me respond to that. The discussion that we had about the foot candles for how bright it was revolved after we had a discussion with a gentleman who came in and talked to us about the size of the signs and things. And the difficulty in identifying how bright it is, is to identify the very specifics into an ordinance, as far as what distance from the sign are you measuring that, at what time during the daytime? Is it based on the ambient light? Is it adjusting based on ambient light? Is it, there was just all kinds of technical things that have to be added into the ordinance in order to make it work. And when we worked with this, a portion of this, yes, we, we did talk about different levels, and at the last minute, we did come up with that Naperville had done a different one, but nobody could come up with a standard that was pretty locked in. So 50 seemed to be the number that most people were using, so we went along with 50 to begin with, until we heard Naperville was different, but we continued with the 50. It's a very difficult and complex thing to measure.
Okay. Alderman Palmsky, you're more than welcome to make a motion if you so choose. No? Okay. Any other comments as it relates to this ordinance? Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you, call the roll.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
No.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist absent. Wagner.
Aye.
Deuter.
No.
Zapatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Saludo.
Aye.
Aye.
10 ayes, 3 nays, 1 absent.
10 ayes, 3 nays, motion carries. Agenda Item 6.14 is approved. And the committee reports Agenda, Agenda Item 7.0, I'm sorry, Agenda Item 7, on to 7.1, this is a report. Clerk Spencer, I would ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the recommendation of the Finance, Council Affairs, and Administrative Services Committee that the City Council direct the City Attorney to prepare a sales tax incentive agreement between the City of Elmhurst and Ed Napleton, Elmhurst Imports, Inc., as outlined in this report. Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman, Bob Dunn, Vice Chairman, Noel P. Toledo, and Mark P. Zapatino.
Okay. To put this before the council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman York, this is a report out of your committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. The report before City Council tonight clearly outlines the sales tax incentive request that was made by Napleton Imports, and also the sales tax incentive policy is posted as a reference point for everyone. The request made is clearly within policy guidelines, and the committee discussion revolved around most every aspect of the request, but when all was said and done, it seemed to move towards the amount of the incentive that we should be considering proposing. The original request by the Napleton Group was for $750,000, but when we looked at the financial projections and took into consideration the sales tax incentive that was provided for the investment in the Kia dealership upgrade, this was clearly an unattainable amount. What was also clear was the fact that Napleton was making another significant investment, over $1.5 million, in not only their own property but in Elmhurst. The report does go on to note the decline in Acura sales since 2006, while also indicating that the Napleton Group believes that the Acura brand is viable and worthy of a long-term investment of this magnitude. There was much discussion about what a rebranding of the store could mean in terms of not only how many Acura cars are available for sale, but what kinds and what colors of cars the dealership would be allocated based on their upgrading to the, to the new store. From my perspective, as Acura is a premium brand, and as mentioned with the likes of BMW and Jaguar, I believe that it's important that the city assist as it can to build this premium brand here in Elmhurst. Just as we have folks who show up in this area to buy a Volkswagen but end up buying a Dodge or a Mazda, we are very likely to have buyers that show up to buy a car from Germany or the UK but switch to a Japanese brand, or vice versa. The point here is that I believe it's important that Elmhurst invest with the Napleton Group to strengthen this premium brand here in town, as it further diversifies our offerings. Thus, those who come to shop will also be more diversified. So, I would ask for your support of this report, and your support of a longstanding Elmhurst business partner that provides so much for Elmhurst taxpayers. The future seems bright, especially for auto sales, so let's help our own to build an even more sustainable business and sales tax foundation for all of us for years to come.
Any comments or questions as it relates to this report coming out of Finance? Alderman Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question for the chairman, if I may, sir. Did the Acura organization display some kind of documentation or some requests, a requirement that they're imposing upon the Napleton facility?
They provided, I think what they called it a book, a rebranding book that had all the images and the colors and all those types of things that they were requiring, requesting the dealership to embark upon.
So, they have a plan?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And all their, then, as part of the discussion in the first meeting, the committee asked for some further information regarding cost considerations with that plan, and that's what they provided. Then, the second time around was a more detailed outline of exactly what all the dollars were going to be used for.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Deuter, you got a question?
Comments?
Comments? Okay.
You know, I was on the Finance Committee when the Kia incentive request was first made, and there was lots of discussion on the Kia incentive request, and I assume the same was true with this request. So, I appreciate the committee's thoughtful deliberations on the request. You know, I think the context, this request for the Acura, what we're calling the Acura dealership, and I'll explain that in just a minute, I don't, I don't think it came up in earlier comments, you know, it really has to be considered in the request of how Napleton operates in general, and incentive that was agreed upon in 2013 by the city related to the Kia. So, I think when we considered that Kia request, you know, the committee had a tremendous amount of discussion and had all the best intentions. But as I think about this request, I really think some of the things that we recommended related to Kia really complicate what's being asked for now. One of the things that was important to the committee as it related to the Kia request, it was important that the incentive that we, any dollars that we would award would be based on sales directly attributable to the investments being made. And it was complicated because, and I believe it says this in the report, the Napleton Group operates Kia sales, Acura sales, their part sales, and their pre-owned car sales under one tax ID. So, it was very complicated to pull out the Kia sales and to be able to identify on an ongoing basis what numbers, what revenue can be attributable to Kia versus Acura, all those different parts. So, our city staff worked hard with the Napleton Group staff to identify the baseline, and at the time, it was, the numbers reflected the percentages that are recommended in this report. So, if you looked at Kia sales, the part sales, and the pre-owned vehicle sales, at that time, to establish the baseline, those three pieces made up 70% of their overall revenue. So, that became, that 70% became the baseline for the Kia request. Anything above that baseline, 70% of it was going, was considered the amount over the baseline. So, that was, that was one piece that's important to think about. Another piece that we looked at, there was a lot of discussion. They, for the Kia request, Napleton came to us and asked for $750,000, which at the time would have funded half of their investments. I think their investments at the time were estimated to be about a million and a half. You know, we did the same projections that the committee did this time around, based on some reasonable estimates of growth. The committee, at the time, we looked at, I think the report for Kia even identified, you know, if they see, if the group was to realize 3% growth, that would have resulted in a $244,000 incentive. At 5% growth, that would have resulted in a $432,000 incentive. We had a discussion at committee, at least as I remember it, should we lower the maximum amount down to either one of those figures? And as I remember the discussion, there was some sense of, we can only be so lucky that their actual sales wildly exceed the estimates. I don't believe it was ever the committee's intent, it certainly wasn't mine, to, that that $750,000 would be realized and we would be in a position to fund half of their improvements. So, those are two kind of baseline pieces. For that Kia agreement, we did not, there was no anticipation of a second agreement. And in fact, one of the conditions of the Kia agreement is that both locations, both the Acura dealership and the Kia dealership, would stay in Elmhurst for the duration of the agreement. That was a key piece of that Kia agreement. They secured both locations for the entire term. So, I think we are, you know, incredibly fortunate to have the Napleton Group in Elmhurst. They're a big operation with 64 franchises in five states. It's clearly a thriving business, and Kia sales are increasing dramatically nationally. If you look at the Kia sales, they're, month over month, sales are breaking records, the same as the report indicates is not true for Acura. I don't have confidence that any increase in sales that the group continues to realize will be attributable to the additional investment, let alone to Acura sales. Instead, I think it'll be the growth of the Kia sales, the growth in pre-owned car sales, and part sales that are going to fuel the growth that will fund this particular incentive. We committed to investing in that portion of the business when we approved the Kia incentive, and the reason we did that is so that we could benefit from the growth. We're seeing some of that growth now, and, you know, I'm concerned that this incentive, you know, really cuts into that benefit that, you know, we're realizing now. Based on the current increases in sales, just what they've been realizing in the past year, I think it's quite likely that the Kia agreement will come close to hitting that $750,000 cap. I don't think it says this in the report, but the Kia, the incentive amount for the first year was $65,000. So, I think any increase attributable to Acura, if these investments are made and they do result in an increase in sales, then that means that they will hit that maximum, the 750 maximum faster. Because if your sales overall increase, whether you're refunding or basing an incentive off 30% of that total or 70% of that total, it's all increasing. I think, based on the, my assumption, which I think is realistic, that they're going to hit that $750,000 for the Kia incentive, that would mean that we committed to 25% of their overall investment. So, was Kia was a $1.5 million investment, for Acura, it's about a $1.5 million investment. So, it, there's no doubt that Napleton is making a significant investment to the city, and that's very much noted. But I think, you know, if we hit that 750, that means we've funded 25% of their improvements. I think that's a significant amount that can only be interpreted as pro-business. I, I think it's great business sense for the Napleton Group to ask for this request. They lose nothing, and I certainly don't fault them for making the request. But my sense is that the current agreement that exists now for Kia should stand alone, and I would not support an additional incentive.
Okay. Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly with Alderman Deuter's comments. I think that over the past few years, we've continued to receive requests from car dealerships in town for sales tax incentives, and we, including myself, take them very seriously. I do, however, believe that we have been providing a little bit more, at least to my liking, in sales tax incentive over the past few years than I am comfortable with. In this case, Alderman Deuter pointed out, and I was going to highlight this as well, the previous Napleton request was binding Acura and Kia within Elmhurst, you know, for the duration of the Kia franchise sales tax incentive. I think that's important to note, not that I believe that either of the dealerships would go anywhere anytime soon. There's other restrictions in the automotive world that prevent them from pretty much going any closer to any other of those dealerships. So, I'm not fearful of them leaving, but this just is, I guess, belts and suspenders, if you will, from the standpoint of both of them are here to stay for at least another eight years, I believe. In regards to the sales tax incentive policy, I don't know if, well, I personally don't believe it really meets the requirements. Item number three in the policy, number one, Roman numeral three, item one, it states that sales tax assistance will not be provided to projects that have the financial feasibility to proceed without the benefits of assistance. To me, what the request is asking for is typical business practices. The dealership might be, or the group, the dealership group, might be asking for them to do these remodeling efforts, but that's just the cost of doing business. I don't have any evidence that they would not be able to do these without our incentive. And then, the other point is item number three, under that same Roman numeral, sales tax rebates will be predetermined for a fixed period of time, not to exceed 10 years, and will include annual and total caps, which we do in this report before us. But it goes on to say, as an example, 50/50 split between city and developer. As of late, we have been swapping and giving the benefit to the developer, in this case, in this case, Napleton, compared to the city by saying that Napleton would get the proposed 60%, and Elmhurst would get the proposed 40%. I know in some cases in the past, we have done greater, city 25, business 75, but that was to attract a business. That wasn't a business that was already in the city of Elmhurst and a big part of the community. So, I think it's a little bit different, and I hate to see that we keep going down the slope where we're giving more benefits to the proposed, proposed developer compared to considering on how are we going to make up these sales tax dollars in the budget, which is right around the corner. And that is one of my outstanding questions. If this moves forward, where are we accounting for this? How are we making up this 40% lost revenue in the budget? You know, we keep on saying that we need to do X, Y, and Z to increase revenue, but here's an opportunity, as Alderman Deuter spoke very fluently on, that I personally don't believe we need to do. I don't think it meets the sales tax incentive policy from their need, according to their proposal, and I think with the very beneficial sales tax incentive that we did for the Kia side, is sufficient enough to support, if, if we do fulfill that at 25% of total development between the two projects, is, is a great deal of money. So, I just leave you with this, is that I'm not sure on why we need to do this, I'm not sure where we would make up the 40% loss from here on out in the sales tax revenue in our budget, and I am concerned in regards to going down a slippery slope of continuing giving the benefit more to the requestor, or the developer in this case, compared to the Elmhurst residents. Thank you.
Alderman Toledo, and then I'll go to Alderman Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this real simple. For an investment of $200,000, we are getting a very respected business dealership to stay in our town. That results in an extra three years of them committing to be in our town. That results in an extra $1.3 million in sales tax revenue to the city. That's a return on investment of a minimum of six times. I will take that investment any day. Thank you.
Alderman Dunn.
One thing that wasn't mentioned in the report was the fact that the car dealership environment is a competitive atmosphere. I think every time we've had one of these to consider, we talked about that that is, that's a real issue, that these car dealerships do have other choices, there are some restrictions in franchising, and, but in this case, there, there was another option. The Napleton Group has had another site that they could potentially move to, and what would that do to them at this point? They are one year into their sales tax agreement, which, as mentioned before, was joint, we tied in, and I think it was a good, good job of city staff and the, and the Finance Committee tying in the Kia and the Acura dealerships to, with that clawback position or provision in the, in the initial deal. And so, what we have here is a 10-year agreement for the Kia dealership and the parts and the used dealer, the used cars, and then we have a, an overlapping agreement with the Acura dealership that extends out a few more years. As was mentioned before, in that, that extra few years, we do get quite a bit of sales tax projected. It's over $600,000 a year in, in the final years of this contract that we're locking in the joint entity to the Acura and the Kia dealership. So, just, just be mindful that there, there is, it is a competitive environment. We are working very well with our car dealerships. We do have a fair number in Elmhurst, and they are getting healthier and, and growing, and that's good for Elmh- and that's good for Elmhurst. And I, I think this particular incentive being, it was mentioned a $1.5 million, but in actuality, it was about $1.7 million, and that was without the contractor overhead and, and profit. So you're looking at maybe a, a upgrade in the order of $2 million, and the city incentive is capped out at $200,000. So, we believe it is, is a strong incentive for the city, and I would urge you to support it. Thanks.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Healy.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I have a question before I make my comments. Can, can somebody from the committee clarify? There's been a couple of comments made about the duration of the Kia agreement versus the extension of the Acura agreement by three years. Can, can one of the committee members just give specific dates that the Kia agreement's good through this year, and then the Acura extends it three years, it sounds like?
Alderman York, you want to?
Yeah, I will attempt to give that answer. The Kia agreement goes through 2022, according to the chart that I'm looking at here, and the Kia agreement would go through 2025.
The Acura agreement.
I'm sorry, the Acura, yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That answers my question. So, really what we're looking at is an extension, as Alderman Toledo said, is, you know, they're, they're here through 2022, can we lock them in through 2025? And, and I look at that as a, as a safe investment. The way I look at this is the way I typically look at all of these types of agreements, is is it a good investment for the city and the taxpayers of Elmhurst? I believe it is. Sales tax, the sales tax base has been growing over the last several years. That is a big part of the reason why we're in the financial position we're in. That doesn't just happen. It doesn't just happen because this is Elmhurst, and I've heard people say that before as, "Well, they'd come here anyway if it weren't for Elmhurst." I don't agree with that. These are the kind of responsible investments that cities have to make to get the attractive properties to come to their city. It was mentioned in previous comments about trying to attract new business. Well, the reason we're trying to attract new business is because somebody's thinking about leaving somewhere where they're at. We've lost a business, and we're in litigation with one now, somebody who got a better deal. It happens. Now, we can, we can think it won't, we can think it won't happen to us, and maybe it won't, but I, I think, I look at this as a responsible use of, of sales tax dollars as, as an incentive for a respected national group to, to keep Elmhurst home. I, I don't see how we couldn't support this.
Any other comments? Alderman Levin.
A couple of questions. You know, I don't deny what we get from our car dealerships. I just wanted to make sure that it's been looked at the correct way. You know, when you pick the year 2006, that was sort of almost the high-water mark for Acura's sales, and then the recession hit, and every year since 2009, sales have gone up markedly. So it's a brand that's increasing in sales, not decreasing in sales. And I also see that it was represented that there's not current financial viability for this dealership without some assistance. And I know that, obviously, a dealership doesn't want to publish all their financial information, but was there a careful look to see what kinds of profits were earned by this dealership over the last three, four years to see that that statement, that it's not financially viable, is actually true, accurate, correct?
Alderman York, I'll defer to you. I'll rephrase it as what, what information was presented to you, I would say, is probably is the ask, I believe.
No, well, possibly. I'll follow up.
Okay, so what's the question? Did they show you indications of their financial instability, I guess would be a way to put it?
No, I mean, I would, in other words, we're not here to invest in a business that could pay for it itself. They're here, we're not incentivizing them to come here, and if they're making a million dollars a year in profits, then I don't know why we'd give an incentive. And I'm not asking on the dais what they're making. I just want to know, did someone look at the financial statements to verify that we are not infusing a capital investment into a very highly profitable car dealership?
Well, I don't think we, we can't comment on the profits. We can comment on the revenue. And from what we, what was shared with us, the sales tax is driven by their revenue, and that has been growing, and certainly took a hit back in 2008, 2009, as you mentioned, Alderman Levin. But revenues are growing. As far as their ability to pay for it, there, there is, I, what we have here is a desire to incentivize a, a viable continuing business to remain in our town versus potentially some other alternatives that are out there.
Alderman Levin.
Well, I understand what an incentive is, but to me, what's, what's an appropriate incentive? And if, I've represented a number of car dealers, and some brands don't do so well, some do better. It's been mentioned, this is a premium brand. The premium brands have been doing very well these, these years. So, to me, just based on a representation that we're not currently financially viable, I guess, you know, I wouldn't want to take someone's word for it. I'd like to have some disclosure that here's what our, and not, not for the entire, you know, to disclose to the public, that someone would look and say, "Yeah, you know, you need this money," because, as you say, the sales are going up since the recession, and that's the way it's been for a lot of businesses. So, I don't know.
Okay. Alderman York.
Thank you. I can, I can address that. I know that during the course of their due diligence, city staff saw that, the, the financials. We didn't, as a committee, see it, but these points were brought up. I think the point with the sales declining since 2006, as was noted, it seems to be more of a global economic condition that existed, where car sales certainly leveled off and declined, actually substantially declined over that course of time. And with, since about 2010, 2011, car sales have really come back at every, at every store here in Elmhurst. For example, in 2013 to 14, there was about a 26% increase in the sales tax reported by the Napleton Group at that particular location, of which 70% is allocated to Kia, because that was the information that was presented to city staff upon numerous requests by this committee to obtain a base number. And then it's simple math to, you know, subtract the 70%, lock in a new base at current year sales, and then have an incentive based on the 30% that remains at a higher base number.
Alderman Deuter.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to comment on one thing that I didn't come back around to in my comments. We're talking about this report tonight and referring to it as the Acura incentive request, and we're calling it the Acura incentive request because they're asking for this request to help fund improvements they're making to the Acura dealership. The reality is, this incentive is not for Acura or for Kia. This one is for 30% of the Napleton Group. The last incentive was for 70% of the Napleton Group, because we're talking about their total sales in Elmhurst. So those total, total sales, I think between 2013 and 2014, those total sales increased 25%. So regardless of how Acura is, you know, what Acura's piece of that total is, this incentive is for 30%. The Kia incentive was for 70% of the entire group that's in Elmhurst.
Any other comments? Alderman Levin.
I would just like to state that I am not opposed to incentives. I just want to make sure that the policy is correct when we approve an incentive, to make sure that the questions have been asked, and that we have a level of confidence that they're appropriate.
Okay. Alderman Bram.
Thank you. And I agree with Alderman Levin's comments and concerns, and I'm not against incentives either. It's, it's what is right for Elmhurst as well as the business that's here. I heard comments of, you know, getting a business or a business coming to town. Those comments aren't true in this case. We have the business. Yes, it's an extension of potentially three years for one of the two businesses for the Napleton Group. One of the two. You know, you have to consider everything when making a consideration on something like this. Are they moving? And if so, you know, what are the moving costs? Is it really beneficial for them to give up a 200, a potential $200,000 incentive, in this case, and, and move their business? I would think the moving cost would eat that up in a heartbeat. That's just my speculation. But the other thing is, I, I go back to what I initially said about our sales tax incentive policy, and, you know, can this petitioner do this without the sales tax incentive from the city of Elmhurst? They're asking for $200,000 over 10 years, $20,000 a year. So if they cannot afford that, either the business itself is in jeopardy of sustaining over 10 years, especially when you're talking a car dealership and not selling something like, I don't know, donuts or candy. So I, I don't see that $20,000 a year is going to make or break this petitioner. I don't see the financial need, which is our own policy states, they have to have a financial need, and it needs to be proven. I haven't heard that it was proven. I heard statements that we believe it's the case, but I don't believe that $20,000 a year over 10 years is going to break this petitioner, and I cannot support this particular incentive, especially when you conclude the overall incentive from, for the Napleton Group from the city of Elmhurst at this time.
Okay. Any other comments? Alderman Toledo.
I would just like to clarify that the agreement that we're discussing tonight extends both the Acura and the Kia through the year 2025. The original incentive had them committed through 2022. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other comments, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to please call a roll.
York.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
No.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Honquist absent. Wagner.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
No.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Okay, that's 10 ayes, three nays, and one absent.
10 ayes, three nays, motion carries. Agenda item 7.1 is approved. On to agenda item 7.2. This is another report out of DP&amp;Z. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city council approve the applicant's request for variations and a three-lot subdivision for the purpose of developing 624 North York Street as a commercial development without any restrictions placed upon the drive-through operation, and with language that states the variations run with the land for a physical fitness facility use. The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council approval. Signed by Scott M. Levin, Chairman, Mark A. Mulliner, Vice Chairman, Michael Honquist.
Okay. To put this before council, I will ask for a motion to approve the report and recommendation as read. Motion by Alderman Levin, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Levin, this is a report out of your committee.
Thank you. By way of background explanation, you'll recall this is the report that was moved for reconsideration and brought back to the committee, and I touched on it at the last meeting. The reason was that as the report came out, I addressed one of the instances, or one of the features that was requested to run with the land, being that the drive-through facility would not be tied to a restaurant offering coffee, tea, or other beverages, but that the drive-through facility would generally be allowed. What was missing from the last report, and I asked staff to highlight some of the missing language, I think some of the language they've highlighted was actually in the last report, but the second feature is that when the applicant came originally, they portrayed, or they provided evidence that the LA Fitness use would not require as many spaces for parking as might be required, as were required otherwise, and it was, the past variance was granted based solely on that representation. There have been a couple of changes. One is that the applicant has since reduced the size of the facility from 45,000 square feet to 37,000 square feet, which has resulted in a change in the parking ratio by reducing the number of spaces required. There are financing issues in terms of their ability to get financing if it's tied to a specific use. So if another facility came in, I wish they would have asked for it upfront. They didn't. Now they're coming back. The committee understands it. So, that change would also run with the land, meaning that if another health club came in, if LA Fitness were to go out, that they would be able to have the same variance. It was a little unusual. It didn't really follow in the normal flow, but it's all together now in this report, and we ask for your approval.
Okay. Comments or questions? Alderman Bram.
I, I guess the one question I have, I mean, this has seen its ups and downs throughout the process, and I thank the committee for their hard work on it, and I'm just going to ask, and this might be speculation, but I, I know after this is discussed and more than likely moves forward, I'm going to get many questions in the weeks to come. Do we know, or can we speculate, will an LA Fitness and a Starbucks be in both of these proposed locations? Because that was the intent of how the ordinance was written, to make sure that we were getting those two facilities. Since then, we've seen the LA proposed building that would house LA Fitness reduce anywhere from 18%, or 8% to 18%. We've seen a lot of changes. So, I, I don't know if the committee feels comfortable, or staff feels comfortable on speculating on that question, but I definitely know I will be getting questions in the near term.
Alderman Levin.
Well, the LA Fitness, and I see their attorney out there kind of hiding behind the press, but, or maybe that's not, I'm not sure who that is, but the LA Fitness deal has been signed, and it was brought back to us with the idea that it's LA Fitness's smaller facility. I do not recall if Starbucks actually signed, and, you know, it's not really the key feature of this one, so I can't answer it honestly.
I was looking if there's additional comments from staff, but if not, yes, okay.
All right. Clerk Spencer, please call a roll.
Levin.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Honquist absent. Wagner.
Aye.
13 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
13 ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda item 7.2, committee report is approved. On to agenda item 8, reports and recommendations. 8.1, Mayor Morley, that's me. I'll try to buzz through this as it's getting later and later as we go on. It's 9:30. A couple of things to announce. One is senior housing tour. I've mentioned this in the past. Our own senior commission is hosting a housing tour and has invited all elected officials to attend. That is a week from this Saturday, not this Saturday, but a week from this Saturday, October 17th, and it starts at the Concord, which is just on the other side of the highway. We'll be visiting the Concord Park Place and Greencastle, and that starts at 9:00 AM at the Concord, and wraps up around 11:30. I would encourage all elected officials to go. I've gone on this a couple of times and found it very informative. Please RSVP back to Ellen, Erin, or Sheila at, in the city manager's office. Another item, Congressman Quigley, every couple of months, I'm not sure if it's every quarter, Congressman Mike Quigley sets up a time to meet his constituents at local municipalities. His staff, I don't think he's going to make it this time, but his staff will be here. We will be hosting them at City Hall Wednesday, October 21st, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM here at City Hall. So, if you have any comments, questions, or issues that you wish to bring to Congressman Quigley's attention, he will be here on the 21st. Quick update, we had a Stormwater Communications Committee meeting, one of our public meetings last week, Wednesday, the 30th, right? And... And some good news out of that, the District 205 Board approved their final version of the IGA for city of Elmhurst to consider regarding the Madison Project. We've been going back and forth on them. I think we are in a position to review that and potentially approve it. It's, that IGA will go to the Public Works Department and then on to the city council for full consideration. I mentioned at that meeting that I figured at least one or two meetings at Public Works and then on to city council for full consideration and hopefully approval. We have started engineering already on that project, so looking forward to that. That's really the first piece of, I guess, project that has come to fruition since we've made these projects, made these meetings public, so I want to thank District 205 for their hard work in getting that done. Another thing mentioned at that meeting was that we don't want to take our foot off the gas. The largest project that's currently up for consideration is what we have proposed at the Brian Gravel Lot, and at that time, at the meeting, Board Member Shannon Ebner said that they will be turning over the majority of that conversation to Dave Moyer, the new superintendent. He joined 205 while we were still in the middle of our IGA, but they felt that he's gotten his feet wet enough, so he will be meeting with city manager Grabowski, Frank Schu, their public works guy, and Howard Killian, I know, have, they're setting up a meeting to talk about gravel lot and get that done as soon as possible. As it relates to the parks, a little bit on hold as it relates to the parks. There's a couple of things that we have asked the parks to consider, and we have sent them our comments in an IGA, and we hope to hear back from them sooner than later. At the end of that, the conclusion of that meeting, I typically like to schedule these meetings two weeks out to keep the public informed. Pardon me. The park district requested that we hold the meeting four weeks out, so the next meeting is on the 29th of October. They said that that should give them enough time. That gives them two full park board meetings and potentially subcommittee meetings to respond to the IGA that we have asked them to consider. So that's the story on, or that concludes my report as it relates to those items. I'm going to quickly jump to the FAA. You'll see there's a PowerPoint up here on our screen. I want to specifically thank Alderman Dunn. As most people are aware, there's been a lot of conversation about air traffic as it relates to O'Hare and the proximity of Elmhurst to O'Hare. I know that there have been numerous meetings, FAA held numerous meetings. At one of those meetings, Alderman Dunn, I guess I'll say cornered, got to know some of the FAA people and asked them a bunch of questions and ultimately arranged to have them come to City Hall and have a public meeting, and it really was fantastic. There's three folks here from the FAA. I'm going to go over real quick the gist of what they said. In 2013, there was a reevaluation and recalculation of airspace that had kind of a dramatic effect on how air traffic was handled, and many people noticed that. When we had, we held this meeting, we had, we had a full audience and we passed out information sheets and, or question sheets, and anybody could write any questions they have. We didn't get to all, the meeting was an hour and a half long, we didn't get to all the questions, but we did gather all the questions and have submitted them back to the FAA, and they have committed to give us written answers on every question that was received. But back to what it means to Elmhurst. I'm going to buzz through this pretty quick here. Couple of things. For the most part, O'Hare likes to have planes land east to west or west to east. They either have what they call an east flow configuration, and that's planes that are coming in from the west and heading east, and that's what you see here. And this is the current east flow configuration. I'm not going to dwell too much on this except to say that on October 15th, what day is it today?
The 5th.
The 5th. 10 days from now, this runway here, 10R 28L, and I'll point to it over here, this runway here, 10R 28L opens up. So we can talk a lot about what happened in 2013, but the fact of the matter is FAA came to this room and presented the fact that air traffic is going to change, what I would say significantly, out of O'Hare come 2000, come October 2015. As it stands right now, there's an east configuration and there's a west configuration. The east flow happens about 30 percent of the time, so this, what we're looking at here happens about 30 percent of the time. The west flow happens about 70 percent of the time. Part of the reason that this is, part of the reason why this is driven this way is that the FAA tells you from a safety standpoint, you want to land into the wind and you want to take off into the wind. So with this west flow configuration, this is the east side of the airport, this is the west side of the airport. Weather comes to us from the west, so the weather's coming this way more often than not. That's why you see landings and takeoffs into the wind. This happens about 70 percent of the time, so you get east flow 30 percent, west flow 70 percent. Well, the good news as it relates to east flow, with this new configuration, under east flow, the runway that is kind of the bane of Elmhurst is right here, 22L 4R. 22L 4R, okay? Whoops. 22L 4R, okay? This is the runway that, that accounts for most of the traffic over Elmhurst. Well, the good news is that when this new runway opens, 10R 28L, during east configuration, 22L 4R will not be used, straight out of the FAA's mouth. Now, we'll believe it when we see it. You know, the primary goal for those air traffic controllers is safety, so this is their intent right now, but they do make safety calls based on weather, among other things. But right now, east flow, when this runway opens up, this runway shuts down, and that red arrow means arrivals. So those arrivals actually start a couple miles out, over Addison and Carroll Stream, et cetera, out west. So in theory, those arrivals will not land over Elmhurst, and our 4R 22L will be closed down during east flow. Another thing to note, east flow versus west flow, as the current, the way the runway, the way O'Hare is currently set up, east flow is inefficient for O'Hare. What does that mean? In best-case scenario, during east flow, O'Hare can land about 94 planes. It's either 92 or 94 planes an hour, okay? Not bad, 94 planes an hour. West flow under the current configuration, they can land 114 planes. So they have a little bit of an incentive to move as many airplanes as possible. So not only does weather dictate, but also dollars dictates. The more efficient they can be by landing more planes per hour, the better for them. Well, the good news is, according to the FAA, as soon as they open up this runway, it puts east flow numbers in line with west flow numbers, so there won't be an immediate incentive to flip over to west flow if they have, if they want to, because they're saying they'll be able to land the same amount of planes. So that's good news, to the point where FAA said that this configuration happens about 30 percent of the time. They can't tell us how, how much, but this percentage will rise. So the east flow percentage will rise, and it puts effectively a cap over the bottom of the traffic flow as it relates to Elmhurst. So that's pretty good news, and we'll see that when it happens on the 15th. The other thing I should mention is, this is the only runway, 10R 28L, 10R 28L right here, this is the only runway that's going to open for the next five or six years. This is what they tell us is the only change that's supposed to happen. The next and final change, full buildout, is supposed to happen in 2021, but that's dependent on funding. This runway's already built and scheduled to open. The last thing as it relates to this, and they don't have a new configuration for west flow, but Alderman Dunn, correct me if I'm wrong, this is the current west flow, and what you get is you get takeoffs on this diagonal runway and they kind of shoot over Elmhurst. They don't have a presentation for this, and by the way, this is the exact presentation that the FAA gave us. They tell us that during west flow configuration, 14R 22L will be used, but it will only be used for takeoffs eastbound. Correct, Alderman Dunn?
I believe you're right.
So I don't have a graphic that shows that, but basically what the FAA told us is, during east flow setup, there's only going to be arrivals at the bottom, and during west flow setup, they said there will only be takeoffs heading east. So if, if what they say is true, we should see a significant change in air traffic patterns out of them, or out of O'Hare, that should significantly reduce airflow, air traffic over city of Elmhurst. So good news from what they told us, proof will be in the pudding. We'll see what happens on the 15th when they open that up. I would encourage anybody to go online and look at the presentation. The last thing I'll point out is, there's, here's some graphics about some arrivals, east flow and west flow, departures, east flow and west flow, but the last page, this is what the final noise footprint's supposed to look like come 2021, but like I said, it's dependent on funding. The last page is very informative. There's various resources here, places that you can actually submit complaints, et cetera. I said, you know, the FAA was here in a staff perspective explaining what can be done, and they say they take all, note of all complaints. In terms of getting the FAA to change any policy they might be following, the best way to handle that one is go to your elected representatives. So I mentioned earlier that Congressman Quigley is going to be in here in a couple of weeks. He would be one of my primary people from an election, elected official standpoint that I would contact if I had issues. So I would encourage everyone to take a look at this last page. Here's a very interesting one. Aircraft flight tracker. According to the FAA, if you see an airplane literally flying over your house at a certain amount of time, day, date, you can plug in all the information you can, and that will tell you that was United Airlines Flight 123 coming in from Denver or whatever. So interesting information if you care to dial it down to that level. And that's my FAA report. Any questions as it relates to that? Alderman Bram?
I just want to thank the FAA publicly for coming out, Alderman Dunn for assisting in setting that up, and Elmhurst for hosting it. It was a good event. It was well-attended, and thank you for the city for putting this presentation online already for further residents to review.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, we'll notice, we should notice a big change on the 15th. At this point, I'm going to hand it over.
Mr. Wagner.
Yes, sir. Oh, Alderman Wagner.
You mentioned there were some questions. They wrote all the questions down, and they'll be getting back with some kind of answer. Did they put a time limit on that?
They did. They was, they said November, and I would say that we probably got 50 questions, 40 or 50 questions. So there's a lot to answer. They answered most, it was kind of like a Legal Women Voters forum where we gathered all the questions, and I tried to get the ones out that I saw similar or repeating, but we'll stay on them. They said November.
Follow-up?
Yep.
I would like to get a little bit more clarification on that. New configuration with a western flow.
Yeah.
With an, with the four left.
A revised map.
Because that doesn't make sense.
I agree. It's what they said. I had them repeat it twice in the meeting, but point well taken. I'd like to get a...
Maybe give city manager Grabowski that task or something.
A west flow map out of them that shows what they said.
Yeah, explain how that'll happen.
Okay.
Flying planes into each other.
As I said, safety's number one for them.
Maybe two.
All right, city manager Grabowski.
Thank you. A few things. As Alderman Kennedy stated, Monday is Columbus Day, and here at City Hall, employees are here, and we're going to have an in-service training day, so City Hall will be closed, but employees will be working. Next, I'd like to congratulate Chief Bacceter and Lauren Wolf on a successful open house yesterday. Quite a few people here. We got the, the superior helicopter to come, which is a big hit, including the fashion show, I understand, was quite in, quite a success.
The chief in the fashion show?
I don't know. I didn't see it. He was.
All right, I'd like to see pictures.
Yes. We'll get those to you. Next, and switching to the police department, I believe everyone knows this, perhaps some don't, but this Friday is Jim Cavitan, Deputy Chief Cavitan's last day. He has served the city of Elmhurst for over 30 years, and he is retiring. We will announce retirement party plans later. Those are still in the works, but as a result of that, and a result of other retirements, we've had a number of promotions to consider. And so Chief Ruth, myself, and Valerie Johnson conducted some interviews department-wide to make those determinations, and we're pleased to announce that Commander Bob Tannehill and Sergeant Mike McLean will be promoted to deputy chief, and that will be effective soon, and we'll do an official swearing-in here at city council quickly as well. As a result of those promotions, there are some commander positions that are open, and we're pleased to announce that Sergeant Lynn Colpak and Sergeant James Gandy will be promoted to police commanders. And then there will be a couple sergeant promotions to follow that, and then, of course, new hires following. So we will get those folks here, the personnel here, to swear them in in front of the city council as soon as we can. Last, I am, it's my pleasure to introduce our new communications manager tonight. Cassandra Schreff is here in the audience. Please raise your hand. She is here to give some details on the new marketing video that the city had commissioned. So with that, let's see if I can get to it here. Okay, let me set it up here a little bit first. So tonight, we're proud to show you a sneak peek video, sneak peek, excuse me, of a new video that we developed in an effort to promote the city of Elmhurst. The video's theme is "Close to Everything, Unlike Anything." It was created by a local resident, Dave Nickerbacher, who works for Banner Collective. The video aims to capture all things unique to the city of Elmhurst, including the museums, parks, schools, library, local recreation activities, restaurants, shops, and more. We plan to take this video and its message and promote it in various ways, which will be discussed after we view the video. So it takes a couple viewings to really get the gist of all that's in there. There's just so many things that, that make Elmhurst what it is, but a lot of compliments to Mike Kopp and Aaron Vandewall, who put a lot of work into that with the, with the company. So thank you both. And with that, Cassandra, please, give us the details on how we're going to use this and where we're going to promote it.
Okay. Thank you, and good evening. As the city manager mentioned, the goal with this video is to share the many, the many... this video is to share the many, many unique qualities that the City of Elmhurst has. The task at hand is to now take this video and share it with our target audience and stakeholders, including, including city, city employees, residents, business owners, civic visitor and tourists and partners. We will be distributing the video in the following manner. The video will be added to the homepage of the city's website. We are currently working on the city's website redesign, and the video will be predominantly displayed on the new site. We are in the process of developing a cohesive social media plan that will integrate the key message and theme that this video depicts about the city, which is "Close to Everything, Unlike Anything." We will budget $150 a month for the next four months to further promote the video through our social, through our Facebook page. The promoted posts will target potential new residents, business owners, real estate agents, and others whose profile may correlate to someone who would find interest in the city. October's e-newsletter and November's Front Porch issue will have a section that drives visitors to the video and that promotes our new social media efforts. We'll send out a press release with a link to the video driving the media, citywide members, and economic development partners to the video. When potential businesses ask for information about the city, we will send them the video link. We'll put the video through a public service announcement on Elmhurst Now TV, and we will also share the link with all civic visitor and tourism partners and ask them to share the video on their website and social media pages. We will also develop a standard email signature for the City of Elmhurst. This is the sign-off on all elmhurst.org email addresses. The signature will include links to the video, city website, and the city's social media pages. Thank you.
Thank you, Cassandra. We appreciate that. If anybody has questions, please let us know. We're happy to answer them. And as Cassandra said, we will post that on our website immediately and share with our partners, the schools and park districts and such, so that they have a chance to view it as well.
Okay. Alderman Wagner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think that was very well done. Congratulations to the staff. That was excellent. Very neat. That might be a big file, though, if you wanted to send it around. I'm wondering if there'll be some kind of condensed version, something that captures-
We'll post it to our YouTube page, and we'll send the link to the YouTube-
Okay. I might have missed that if she said it, so I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Fantastic video. I think it's great. Makes you want to watch it again. Onto Agenda Item 9, ordinances 9.1. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the ordinance.
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a purchase and sale agreement for real property.
Okay. Okay. To put this ordinance before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve as read. A motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Toledo. Any comments?
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, don't we have to say what the address is or anything on this?
Yeah.
I mean, this was in executive session, so I think we need a little more detail for the public.
I would, I agree. No.
Do you want me to read it?
We have not, because in case the committee voted no.
Yeah, but now, now we're voting, so I think it's appropriate. I don't know if Patty has that full. Have her read the whole thing. I'm going to have Clerk Spencer read the entire ordinance again with the address.
Okay. This is ordinance 0-63-215. An ordinance authorizing execution of a purchase and sale agreement for the property, for the property commonly known as 285 North Geneva Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois.
Okay. Now I'll ask for a motion. Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Toledo. Any conversation? Alderman Levin.
Mayor, I think it'd be a good idea also to explain why we're purchasing the property for those who are watching in the studio audience.
I will ask the gentleman who moved to, to fill us in. Alderman Mulliner.
This is property that's on Geneva Avenue that's in the flood-prone area that we had an opportunity to purchase, and it's a location where we'll be able to do some flood mitigation.
Fantastic. Okay. Any additional comments? Pardon me. Any additional comments? Clerk Spencer, please call a roll.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist absent Wagner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion carries. That ordinance is passed. Onto ordinance 9.2. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the entire ordinance, the title of the ordinance, please.
An ordinance authorizing execution of a purchase and sale agreement for the property commonly known as 289 North Geneva Avenue, Elmhurst, Illinois.
Motion to approve. Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Healy. Alderman Mulliner, is this property next to the other one?
This is adjacent to the other one for the same purposes.
Alderman Healy, anything?
Sir.
Okay. Alderman York.
I think it's important to note that this is also adjacent to East End Park, too, just so, just so people can get an idea of where it is. It's in the low section of Geneva, too, because some people aren't familiar with just the addresses alone, so.
So should this ordinance be approved, in effect, the city council, city will be purchasing two properties adjacent to each other on the far west side of East End Park. City believes that we will be able to do some flood mitigation there and offer some relief to the rest of those residents on Geneva. Okay? Any additional comments? I'd ask Clerk Spencer to please call a roll.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Healy.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Conquist absent Wagner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, motion is approved. Agenda item 9.2 is approved. Okay, that's it for ordinance. Any other business? I'll ask for a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Kennedy, second by Alderman Wagner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.